We popped it back into place.
All right. So now that it's seven o'clock. Just gonna get a few more people here. As it is seven o'clock, we will get this meeting started and begin with our mission statement. The mission of the Bold School District is to provide all learners in the Bold community an education designed to develop the creativity, character, confidence, and skills essential to flourish in a changing global societies. And we will begin today. I call meeting order at seven, and we will begin with the approval of the agenda.
Some Sagatow?
Motion is made by Sagatow.
I'll second.
Seconded by Boctow. Any questions or discussion on anything on the agenda? Making sure if he's muted. All right. And there is no discussion, we will vote, and we'll begin with Melissa.
Aye.
Brian?
Aye.
Jamie?
Aye.
Sandy?
Aye.
Tracy?
Aye.
And I myself, I am an aye. Motion carries. Recognition of visitors to the board meeting. Thank you all for joining us online. And our agenda is honestly should be purely easy to get through. So we'll get you outside if you want to for this view to enjoy some of this beautiful night. So public forum is placed on our agenda for every regular board meeting. During this part of each regular school board meeting, up to 10 minutes of time will be allowed for district constituents to address the board. It's the time of listening by the board. And so if anybody would like to speak, I ask you to unmute yourself and state your name, and I will acknowledge you. And then as soon as we get five people, then we'll start speaking. You'll each get two minutes, and I'll keep time on my.
Hi.
Okay, hi Randy. Okay, I've got you down. I gotta get. All right, as long as we get our, okay, perfect. Got some audio issues here. Okay, so Randy, anyone else like to speak?
Yes, Todd Frank would.
Okay, thank you, Todd. Would anyone else like to speak? All right, one more time. Would anyone else like to speak? Please unmute yourself and state your name. Okay, with that, we will begin our public forum. And Randy, as soon as you're ready, I'll start the clock.
Okay, I think I'm good.
All right.
Okay, thank you. I first, I want to thank Mr. Bransoy and Danny. They took the time to show a group of us through the school a couple of weeks ago. And I realize time out of his day that he had to spend with us. So I appreciate appreciate that time and both of those two gentlemen. So I will say, you know, from my walk through the school does definitely need repairs. Specifically, I'd say to the ventilation system, you know, I know we have plumbing issues. And Danny said several areas of the roof, as we all know, need replacement, I guess. So so obviously, these are just areas I would feel that somebody needs to act on immediately, specifically starting with the roof to prevent any further damage from happening, even if some other long range planning is put in place. Anything that would happen on a larger project, I'm sure would be several years down the road. So I really feel something needs to be addressed on those areas sooner than later. So I I've I spent a little time and looked through some of the information I was given on costs of repairs and such. And I'm not I'm not quite sure I have the latest and greatest cost estimates. I'm I have some information that shows, you know, thirty some million dollars of repairs that was needed, but that also included adding like 20,000 square feet of new space or new school. I've got some that show the school needing about 11 million dollars in repairs. So I would ask if, you know, that's something that could be emailed to me, what exactly that number is for the immediate school without any additions on it, just to get our school into a safe, non-leaking, well-ventilated facility, I think would be would be the first step. So and I maybe think that information should be provided at the front desk. So any other bold, you know, people in the Bold School District that want that could come in there and make sure we're getting the latest and the best information. I know there were quite a few separate copies and other estimates and stuff that was sent out earlier or just distributed. And some changes obviously have been made. And so just make sure we're on the same page.
All right, perfect. We're past two minutes, so I have to stop people. But thank you so much.
Thank you.
All right, Todd, let me make sure my, whenever you're ready, go ahead.
You can hit your timer, Jill.
Thank you.
So thank you, Todd Frank speaking. I want to commend the administration and school board for making the decision and working with the BLHS School District on finding a time to meet jointly together and making that public. As the mission statement for Bold states about providing opportunities for students in a global market, I think there's many things that can be done from a pairing and a sharing perspective between the districts that will help both districts. When I put up a mirror between Rhode Island and Hector, I see many, many similarities right now between the two districts. Facility needs that have to be addressed. The general fund is lower than what I believe both districts want. And then if you look at the fund balance for community, we're not in a very good position with almost 500,000 in debt, but they are in a good position on that fund. So I asked the board and the administration, when you go into those meetings, to keep an open mind and listen. I ask that you don't go in with any demands at this point. And let's work together for two districts to find some optimal solutions that help not only Bold, but BLHS serve the students in our area. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Thank you both very much for speaking. Sorry, had to admit a couple more people here. And moving on to the consent items. And we only need one motion to approve the consent items. So this month, we are approving the bills for payment. We're going to approve the minutes of the February 17th, 2021 canvassing meeting and the February 22nd, 2021 regular meeting. I do have a correction of the canvassing meeting minutes. Teresa Jacobs was at the meeting. She's not listed as someone that attended, and she was here. And the other thing I just want to address is at a regular meeting, Corey Eiler, Tracy had had emailed about this, that we had said we were going to table. The vote passed three to two. And I said we were going to table, and that was my mistake. I, for some reason, I thought we had six people. I so three to pick five. So it did pass, so we were not tabling it. So that was my mistake. But then the vote had been, there was a motion, a second, we had discussion, we voted, and it did pass. So but it and it's right in the minutes. I just wanted to clear that up before we move on. So with the minutes amended for those canvassing meeting minutes at Teresa, I will make the motion to approve that.
Second, Bolin.
Motion is made by Hanson, seconded by Bolin. Any discussion or questions? Hearing nothing, we will vote, and we'll begin with Brian.
Aye.
Jamie?
Aye.
Sandy?
Aye.
Tracy?
Aye.
Melissa?
Aye.
And I myself, I am an aye. Motion carries. All right, moving on to personnel. Number one, approve the resignation of Jody Eybauer, Business Manager Assistant effective June 3rd of 2021.
Some Sagatow?
Motion is made by Sagatow.
Second Boctow.
Seconded by Boctow. Any discussion or questions?
Do we have someone to cover? Are we looking at all the good stuff or no?
It'll be, as soon as we approve it, it'll be an opening we'll advertise. And no, we do not. She's right now, she's she's in halftime position. And so we're looking at kind of realigning that at the district office right now. So we're not sure what we're going to advertise for. We contracted some of the services to the co-op because Jody wanted to back off on her time, and so she went half-time. She was full-time beginning. So we have to do some evaluation of that position. And Lindsay and I have been talking about it with Julie. And so we'll put a plan together, and we'll come back to the board with with an option here. But I think we're going to advertise to see what what's out there. So yeah, we'll have to replace it definitely.
Thank you.
I got one question to the back of the bill. I kind of missed that section today. Just one question. I'm going to go back to the bill.
She's going back to the bills even though it's.
I missed that one.
It's been approved now.
Well, it's fine, whatever. But I just got a quick question, and I just don't want to get in trouble over this. Can we actually pay a booster club for services? Because we paid striping for football games, $600 to the Bold Football Banquet Committee. Can we realistically do that? Because it's a nonprofit, correct?
I would have to check Lindsay on that. Probably it's an in and out is that they have given those funds to the district, and that comes out of their fund. And so that's what I would say without knowing any more about it. Besides, I'd have to check on.
Okay, we should check on that. I know one more here. There it is. Okay, quick question. The CenturyLink and the Excel Energy Bills, are either of those for the Rhode Island School?
They, we pay the bill over there.
Yeah, but which which one is CenturyLink? Or Center Point or Excel?
Excel is over.
Rhode Island?
Rhode Island.
Okay. All right, thanks, Joe.
Yeah, no problem. All right, getting back to approving the resignation of Jody Eybauer, Business Manager Assistant effective June 3rd. We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Hearing nothing, we'll vote. We'll begin with Jamie.
Aye.
Sandy?
Aye.
Tracy?
Aye.
Melissa?
Aye.
Brian?
Aye.
And I myself, I am an aye. Motion carries. Number two, approve the resignation of Interim Superintendent Dale Bransoy effective June 30th of 2021. I will make the motion.
I'll second.
Motion is made by Hanson, seconded by Benson. Any discussion?
I just want to say thank you, Dale, for your leadership over the last three years. And it's been a pleasure working with you.
You're kind of a full-time, part-time.
Above and beyond your color duty, Dale.
Thank you.
Yeah, amazing leadership. Thank you so much for everything.
All right, hopefully Joy's getting all that done. Any other further discussion?
I'll just enter into that and saying thank you for your support. In a period of time I've been here, I've enjoyed the Bold communities and the school district, and you've got outstanding outstanding school system. And so protect it and take care of it. And and whoever is in this position, expect them to provide the leadership that you can go in a positive direction. It's you've got outstanding school system, staff and parents and students. You know, just I could get an email Sunday night about our girls' basketball team and the academics. You know, it's it's that's some very positive things to be very proud of. So you've got a good system. So thanks for allowing me to be here and working through some things.
Okay. And with that, we will vote. Sandy?
Aye.
Tracy?
Aye.
Melissa?
Aye.
Brian?
Aye.
Jamie?
Do I have to?
Do what you need to do. I and myself, I am an aye. Motion carries. All right, moving on to superintendents report.
The first item that I have on the agenda is with the legislature, which everybody knows they've been talking and throwing a lot of things around. And it's getting to crunch time here pretty soon. And so things are going to start getting rather serious. And last week, the Republicans, Senate Republicans announced their budget targets. And so the overall target was at 51.9 billion for a two-year budget. And so the proposal includes additional 152 million for youth 12 education, which is very positive. And so that's good. The governor released his revised budget recommendation. He made a budget recommendation in February before the forecast of reforecast came out, and he's revised it. It came out very positive. And so another good news for the state of Minnesota, and he adds 86 million to the original education finance recommendation of 622 million is what he's predicting for the public school system in the state of Minnesota. So I think it's good to get that type of a forecast. And when we talk about school funding, it's the state that provides that. Then quite a focus has been on summer learning right now, opportunities, recommendations. The federal is providing dollars, and the state is allocating dollars for that. And so a big concern of learning that has been lost due to the pandemic. So we don't know where that's going to take you. And so Governor Walz is putting a good share of money into that, the state dollars into it, so and also with federal dollars. So it's going to be interesting to see. And right now, the administrative team has been throwing around ideas of what can we do this summer? Do we want to provide some enrichment-type activities for the summer? Or what, we don't know. And so we'll be doing a lot of brainstorming on that coming up. And and then the Senate Education Finance and Policy Committee have been busy. One thing that they've been that you should be interested in is that it's allowing school boards to renew expiring our friend as my board vote. This has been kind of come around different times, and it seems like it gets kind of put out back on the back burner. And so it's it's upcoming and getting more momentum. So that would be a plus for for the district. The CINICS courses, you can talk to Mr. Minton about that and and all the social studies standards they're looking at now. And and there's a bill in there for CINICS courses for 11th and 12th grade. And I think we're teaching that at the 12th grade level right now. So we fit into that, but I don't know where the standards are at. So the social studies people will be looking at that right now. The world's best workforce is they're changing some reporting requirements. So that's something that we'll be interested in. And then they're providing some state federal aid to schools that are doing hybrid and in-person instruction for the 2021 school year. They're looking at helping out on that. So and several different bills that are in. And probably what to put in your head is where the, I said, it's the time is coming, and it's getting to be crunch time. The Senate and House will be taking their Easter Passover break, March 26th to April 5th. And then April 9th is the third deadline, and this is the deadline for which committees must act favorably on major appropriations and finance bills. So there really are, that's not that far off. And then May 17th, the end of the record session. And so I encourage you if to follow what's happening in the state and in the legislature and the House and the representatives. And if you listen to the MSBA Chaproom, that's available at nine o'clock on every Friday. And that's your two lobbyists that are working with the with the representatives. It's 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 really interesting. So if you have the time, go listen to that. It's very, it's about a half hour. It's been a half hour just filling you in on where everything is at at this time. And we're ways away from St. Paul, so we have a tendency to forget that they're the ones that make all these decisions. The other thing I think is the school officials are looking at is mandates. Talking about more mandates. And and as far as the school officials feel, we've got, let's, for everyone we put in, let's take two out. The amount of mandates that we're required to do. And so it's really extreme. And so we'll see where that goes. And so a lot of things happening right now with the legislature. And so and it impacts us. The forecast, the financial forecast is very positive. And so maybe we're going to get some help in this revenue side of the school district. We're hoping that they always talk of the 2% and look at what inflation is doing to us. So you know where that 2% is, it's pretty minimal when you're looking at the operation of the school districts. So follow as much of that as you can, and I advise you to get involved. Your legislators, let them know your thoughts. They're representing you, and they want to know. I've talked to them, and they're, they want to know where you're at. You know, if they're going to require a CINICS 11th and 12th grade, how does that affect Bold? That's very, it's really a big discussion point right now. And then the funding. Remind them what inflation does to our district and how we're trying to keep up. And so you're in the trenches too. So the MSBA is your lobbying group, and so use or take advantage of them. They're good people. Okay, the school calendar is in your packet, and we had to make some improvements on it, some errors that we found. And so we, I handed you out a hard copy now, and we also, Joy emailed it out today, so you can take a look at it. As far as the school board's concerned, the main thing you look at is the number of contract days for staff and then a number of student contact days. That's what what you're held accountable for. So right now, we're at 180, 181 staff teacher days and then 172 student days. And there's nine days in there for staff development and conferencing and things like that. But that's ready to go. If you have questions on it, don't hesitate to give me a call. And so we've made some corrections on it already, so we'll look at it some more. Next one I have is on the facility study, our work we're doing, the update and where we're at. And I just want to share that maybe Mr. Minton's going to talk about this, but he's someone that has really been supportive of the top 20. And and so that they, last Friday, they had an in-service and had, they spent the morning with Tom Cody, who is the, is ahead of the top 20. And really, I was able to listen to the first couple of hours, and I had to go to another meeting I had, so I didn't get to see the whole session. But but I was really impressed with what he was saying. And I thought, boy, he's really talking right to us. That whole. And and his message was, hold on, do the best you can, as often as you can, and for the most you can. And I think you think about that, that's our role. And so his theory is with the top 20 focus is where we choose to perform one of these two paths. Above the line is a top 20, he calls it. And then he draws a line, and below the line is the bottom 80. And I shared some things in my correspondence with you, some of the line items or the topics that deal with the top 20 or of the bottom 80. But I think what he always comes back to is that we have choice as individuals and how we work with that. And so you look at that list, the top 20 and the list of the bottom 80, and and you can say, you know, how are we, how are we seeing? We have, we have choice here. So and I think when we're dealing with facilities, what we're dealing with right now, we have a tendency to choose the bottom 80, below the line. And that's easy to do. This is normal response, we're not getting our desired responses. And he talked about that. And nothing has changed, and we play the blame game. And we need to stand together, and each person needs to share their concerns and their needs. And so I think what he was sharing there, I think, was very true. And we held two listing sessions with the group. And and that was strictly for us to hear what were the concerns and what was out there. So I think that's one thing we tried to do the last two weeks now. And we had a group of, I think we had like 12 in one session, and we had like five or six in another session. And it was where they had an opportunity to to share about the facility, got an opportunity to turn, walk through it and and see, and then also got an opportunity to look at numbers. And so and so we're working with that. And so our facilities, we continue working with putting a plan together. So this past week, Brian Thompson Garland Company, they're a roofing company that works with school districts. And Danny asked him to come down and get a walk on our roofs and looking at our walls or block and seeing, taking a look at this building. And so they did do that. And so he's coming back with, he has some interesting pictures to show you. He showed them to us when he was here. And and he'll come back. He's gone for this week, so we're hoping next week we can get him to come and meet with Facilities Committee and then bring it to the whole board of, and looking at roofs right now. But we've got a lot of brick that needs a lot of help also. And so he'll be taking a look at that. And 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 it's nothing new. And this has been on the calendar, looking at things we did. That's one of the things that what I think everybody agreed upon with our group when we turned was that roofs is something you can't abuse. You know, you've got to keep up with them. And and so I think that's that's an issue that we're working with. So so I know. So with that, then we've got March 30th, where we got scheduled to meet in Hector from 6:00 to 8:00 with with the BLHS Board. And we wanted to visit with them and see if there's some things that we can do, sharing or working together as far as staff or whatever. And so so we'll be looking forward to that that evening and having a conversation of possibly helping, helping support each other. And so and I think the only other thing is, I left with you a correspondence that I received today from GFW. I, as our last work session, I was asked to contact GFW, and so I did do that. I talked with the superintendent, and they had a board meeting last Tuesday. And the correspondence that I gave you there is what he brought, he brought out. And they're not interested in a consolidation, but they're just like the rest of us said, they're interested, is there some programs we can work with? And I think one, and we talked about it today in our admin admin meeting, was the LIF program. And Jim knows a lot more about that than I do, but they're interested in it. And it goes to the construction trades and things like that and whatever the districts would come together on. So so that's, but they're they're interested in sharing and talking. And and so we'll continue talking through with the superintendent. Jeff Forton's the superintendent, and and he's very open to what are some things we can do. The LIF grant would give us some options. And so we're going to be looking at that. So, okay. Any questions you people have or comments? Okay, thank you.
All right, moving on to the elementary principal report.
I promise mine won't be that long. I guess the best thing that we had is students back in the building on the 17th, St. Patrick's Day. That was kind of a bittersweet day for us because last year we shut down on that day. So there was, there was some emotion coming back in the building that day, but it was good. You know, you can definitely tell when kids are smiling. It's hard to see their face, but you can definitely tell. And they, they had the twinkle in their eye, and they were ready to be back after a little two-week hiatus from being in the building. So that was great to see, as Jamie likes to call it. I did wear my fun pants. I had my my shamrock pants on. So yeah, the kids enjoyed it. We, I don't know if some of you have seen it on Facebook, we did have a little leprechaun show up and do some four-leaf clovers or three-leaf clovers into the the snow. Watching the kids go at recess and trying to find the pot of gold was really interesting. Watching the kids go at recess and trying to find the pot of gold was really interesting. I wish I would have videotaped it, but that was, that was fun. The next big thing we have coming up is the MCAs. That'll basically be the month of April. That's grades three through 11. So that's kind of our next big topic. And then the one thing that I've got coming up is kindergarten roundup. We did put a date on that. That is May 3rd, it's a Monday. As of right now, we are planning to do that in person. We've got a couple areas that we could do that in with the gym and the cafeteria. So that'll be a positive. And a big, a big thank you to the 523 Trading Post. They did give us little door prizes for that, that day as well. So that's kind of what we've got going on in the elementary and middle school.
Do you want to share with how long it took you to draw the little shamrocks?
My first few shamrocks were not very good. I had to go to YouTube to figure out how to do it.
It was fun to see. That was cute.
It would have taken me a lot longer.
Oh, I caught someone from art today because I was impressed. I'm like, you really did do that. And he's like, yes, I did. I had to go to YouTube. I'm like, wow, I'm impressed.
Now you have little paths out there.
Yeah, it was cute.
Very good.
Thank you very much. Moving on, high school principals report.
I actually got a lesson from Brett on how to draw a shamrock. They are hearts. You draw hearts. All right. So now you don't have to go to YouTube. All right, yeah, the only thing I would like to add to that, and Dale alluded to it, and I'm probably going to steal some of Derek Flann's thunder, but we're real excited to hear the girls' basketball team is the section academic champs. So they had a average, grade point average of 3.833. So pretty stellar. So yeah, let's give them a round of applause. I guess that's all I was planning on doing. Dale alluded to the top 20 as well. That is, that's something we've been doing for a few years here with, as professional development. And it's, it's a really good program. And what, what the teachers appreciate about it is it's not about becoming a better teacher. It's about becoming a better person and, and a better communicator and how you work with people. I know a couple of years ago, Mr. Flann and Julia Church, they both went to a summer training on it. And it's, it's neat. When Dale talks about being above the line, they use the line so that you can determine, are you in a positive place in your life right now or are you, are you upset? Because how we see problems, it's very different. If you see a problem when you're in a good mood, it's achievable. It's a goal. It's something you want to work with. But that same issue, if you're below the line, if you're angry or you're upset because your dog just chewed up your favorite thing, that same problem suddenly becomes something that's happening to you and something that you don't want to deal with. And so just the tiniest part of this program is just knowing, are you above the line right now or are you below the line? Because if you're getting into an argument with someone and you're above the line, it's going to be productive. If you're getting into an argument and you're below the line, you're probably going to say some things that you really don't mean or don't want to. So that's just the smallest portion of it, but it's always good to have the top 20 folks come and we do appreciate that. Any questions for me?
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, moving on to activities reports. Mr. Flann.
The only thing that I need to add is kind of updates on the playoff stuff that I had in there for our winter sports. No fans are going to be able to get into any of this stuff. So if you're hoping to go, I'm sorry, I can't even go to some of this stuff. Girls' basketball, I will be able to get into that one to supervise adults who are cheering for a basketball game. Is, they're playing tomorrow night at Sleepy Eye St. Mary's that will be streamed on SESM, SESM for Sleepy Eye St. Mary's Facebook page. That's how they're doing their streaming and they did sort of play-by-play with it last time. I know because I was sitting right next to the guy that did it because that was their assigned seat for me. So that's where the girls' basketball team is. And then we have two wrestlers that made the, they're doing the wrestling tournament different this year. They're essentially in the top eight in the state right now and they've qualified to go to St. Michael Albertville on Saturday. Austin Kicker at 132 pounds and Tim Pepel at heavyweight. We don't know exactly when they will wrestle, but it'll be Saturday and the individual session starts at 2:00 PM. So probably their first match will be sometime between 2:00 and 3:30, something like that. That is viewable. You have to go to the Minnesota State High School League website or I'll try to get the link on, on our Facebook and our school website. But there is a charge for that one. It's $10 to watch wrestling for the day. You can watch all the matches in Class A or you can rent all three days. AAA is on Thursday, double A's on Friday, single A's on Saturday. And all three days is $20. So if people want to watch, it is available. But so the State High School League doesn't have to come and ask us for thousands of more dollars here. They're trying to make some revenue off of this through the streaming. So unless there's questions, that's all I had to, to add to what I gave you guys.
So that's their state tournament?
Correct. And it's, it's being held at St. Michael Albertville because I believe the Wild are at home some of those days, so they couldn't use the X.
Thank you.
I got a quick question. You have anything planned for like, I know you said something about here that you got summer rent program. Is that looking like it's going to be a goal this year?
At this point, we have to plan that we can have it because we can't do that in a few days. So we're planning for it. And if we have to cancel it because of something related to COVID, then we would do that. But we're, I told Mr. Zupki to start looking at putting his staff together and start looking at getting his documents that he sends out and everything ready to, to try to do it. I'll have to meet with the Community and Advisory Board sometime in the next couple of weeks to talk about pricing on that because it's one of those things that, it's a service we've offered at a very low cost for a long time and we need to reevaluate some of those things and see what, what we can afford to do it at. So I'll probably have that in next month's meeting is what, what I'd recommend we charge for this year.
Have you found out any more about Zoom, Community Ed stuff? Anything on that?
I've, I've put a few things on since last meeting, just stuff that comes to me through 4H or the Minnesota Engineers Society or something sends me online classes. A lot of them are things that we would have to program for here. So they're a little more difficult because we would have to find somebody to teach it here on a Zoom. And those aren't always easy to find, but the things that are structured where people can just go on and take a class. I've got a few of those on there now to try to make stuff available.
Okay, thanks, Mr. Derek. Thank you.
All right, moving on to school board committee reports. I know Facilities has met.
So we met last week. It was Brian, Teresa, myself, Danny, Jim and Mr. Brandzoy. We planned for an hour, took two, a lot of stuff and just kind of what our expectations are as a committee. We know we have to meet again. And it sounds like we'll probably be doing that hopefully next week if we can get the gentleman from Gardner available. So nothing really exciting or shattering unless I'm wrong.
All right, thank you. Anybody else have anything to report during meetings that escaped me? All right, with that, moving on to, school board report was handed out at the meeting. It's like they're slowly getting back into the swing of things. You guys weren't able to go to the.
I wasn't.
Okay. So as always, Trish, I'm sure she will answer any questions you may have. All right, moving on to new business. Number one, district information on COVID-19 pandemic by the admin.
I'll just introduce or start out is we, like Mr. Minton said, we got the elementary in now at full and that's, that's an exciting point to see kids in the building and the high school now is in hybrid. And so we're working with that right now. And so we're at our, every Monday, the county superintendents do a Zoom meeting with the county health. And so we visited this morning again and something that we can't figure out is why are the number, the cases so high in Rando County? We're out of 87 counties in the state of Minnesota. We're St. 17th for the number of cases involving COVID. And we're trying to figure that out, you know, we got hit in school here, a really quick one, one weekend. Ended up going out for two weeks. And so that impacted a lot of kids and a lot of activities. And so why we, you know, they're really working, trying to figure out, you know, what, why are we getting it so heavy on that stuff? So ranked 17th. And then the other statistics they gave us was that the largest age group was teens. And so that I thought was kind of interesting data, that piece that they gave out too. But we meet with them and we keep working, the schools, districts, working with the county. And, and they've been very good at getting the vaccines out and the shots. And so they're really, they're really excited about that. They've, they've been going, stretching out beyond the county. And so, so that's pretty important for, for all of us. So I'm going to leave it at that and these two can talk about, Eric, about how it's impacting elementary, high school, and we're moving forward.
Well, as, as always, we want the kids in the building. It's just easier for kids to be here to learn, elementary level, middle school level. You know, we rely on parents or somebody to be home to help the kids. Yes, they can do most of it, but it's still prodding them along. I know my, I've got a middle schooler and we've kind of got to sit by him or he's not, he's off to La La Land. So that's, it's the honest truth when you get, when you get your lower, lower grade kids. You know, in K 6, we haven't had to do hybrid. We've been trying to not have to ever do hybrid. That's going to be a big benefit for us if we don't have to. Because again, then we're counting on parents or grandparents to be basically a para to sit next to their student, which it's just better off that they're here. Like I'm good there.
Yeah, we're, we're still planning on having students coming back on the 6th. Did I get that right? Yeah, yes. So right after Easter break, we're still planning on having everybody back in the building. That has not changed. I, I, I don't expect that to change, especially since the county numbers have been going down and again. That's good to see. We, you know, we, we, we don't think that this had a direct impact from putting everybody back together. We think that was likely a fluke. And again, what, what people need to understand was the, even though the cases did shoot up from, we had like six on Monday, these aren't perfect numbers, but like around six on Monday and by Wednesday we were up to 28 positive student cases. But that wasn't the main issue. The main issue was we were at, actually at eight classrooms that didn't have teachers in them. And that, that's just something we can't do. We've, we struggle right now. We've got a couple of teachers due to health reasons, two of them, who are teaching from home. And we struggle to try to make sure those classes are covered as much as possible. Likely, luckily, one of them has mostly older students and we're not as concerned about that. But like I said, we hit the point where we had that many, we just, if there had been any kind of building emergency, we would have had a lot of kids that didn't have any kind of adult supervision and would have been expected to save themselves. So that was our, that was our big issue. But again, we don't, we don't feel that that was necessarily tied to, even though it coincided with everybody coming back to the building. When you look at the dates that people started getting, the kids started getting sick, they would have contracted the virus the week before. So that's, we're, we're pretty confident. In fact, I was reading an article today that somebody emailed to me and a study looking at schools out east and they were finding that, that in most cases, it was the teachers that were the people transferring the virus, not so much the kids. And so that was good news. And then they looked at also what a lot of these schools were doing. And it seemed to have much more impact, the schools that had good ventilation. And I'm going to talk to Danny tomorrow about, in the summer, what he'll do to kind of keep things cool is to set up big fans around the building and so it kind of starts to circulate the air. I'm going to talk to him tomorrow about doing something like that because they, they feel, in what I was reading today, that that had a greater impact on, on keeping the virus at bay than a lot of the other distancing and things. So. Any questions on the Rona?
All right, moving forward. Number two, approve the ballpark complex contract for April 1st through August 31st, 2021. This is an annual contract that we've been in for many years.
Many years.
All second, Bookdome. Motion's made by Benson, seconded by Bookdome. Any questions or discussion on this? Hearing nothing, we will vote. We'll begin with Tracy. Hi, Melissa.
Hi.
Brian.
Hi.
Jamie.
Hi.
Sandy.
Hi.
And I myself, I am an I. Motion carries. All right, number three, approve the school district calendar for the 2021, 2022 school year.
So will Bulleen.
Motion's made by Bulleen.
Second, Segal.
Seconded by Segal. Any questions or discussion? All right, hearing nothing, we will vote. We'll begin with Melissa.
Hi.
Brian.
Hi.
Jamie.
Hi.
Sandy.
Hi.
Tracy.
Hi.
And I myself, I am an I. Motion carries. All right, moving on to number four, review and approve policy 209, Code of Ethics. Mr. Brandzoy, how, do you want me to read this?
We can just, just take a look at it. You have it in your pack and you've got a chance to review it. And, and this came about bringing this policy out. We, we talked about it at our last meeting. One of the questions was, what's the role of a committee member? What's our role as a board member? And so that's what brought this policy out, 209, which is the Code of Ethics. And so I think in reviewing it with, with the committee, they felt it was, you know, let's review it as a board. And I really think it should be a policy you probably want to bring out annually when you do your review. It really reminds us our role as a board member. And so I, I just want you to take a look at, as a member of the school board, I will. And these are, this policy is your policy. This was adopted in 2015. And so if you want to change some things, you're, you're always welcome to do that. But I think it's pretty, and this is the governance that the training you receive from the MSBA, this is what they base it on. And so it's a, it's a strong policy. And so, but a lot of good things are set in here and you can read through it. I'm not going to read it all, but I think support the decision of the school board, even if my position concerning the issue is different. That's, that's not always an easy thing to do, but I think we've got to remember what we need to come to consensus and we have to be one. And I think that's, and you can look at those other lists there. Well, as a member, I will. It's not that you may. It's that I will as a school board member. So I think for us to be in the position we're in, you're, you're expected to do that. The B part is performing the proper function of a school board member. I will. And again, it's I will do these things. Focus on education policy as much as possible. That's your job. Remember, my responsibility is set policy, not implement policy. And consider myself a trustee of public education. You know, and that's when we talk about the legislature and your work communication with them. They're good people. They want to hear from you. And so don't hesitate to connect with them. You recognize. Uh you recognize my responsibility, exercise the actions of this board as a whole. And then work through the superintendent, not over around the superintendent. Delegate the implementation of school board decisions to the superintendent. Superintendent is considered being the CEO of the company, of the school district. So really open up that line of communication. It's uh it works a lot better. And maintain relations with other members of the school board. So we need to respect each other. Respect the rights of others to have and express opinions. And recognize authority rests and make disparaging remarks. No disparaging remarks. So but you can read through those things and then my responsibilities to my community. And that's a, you know, it really outlines it and 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 the school board association has done a good job in working with the superintendent of schools and the staff as well. Own the superintendent responsible for the administration of the district. That's your job. And uh so do that. And give the superintendent authority concerning with his or her responsibilities and you go through the rest of it. I'm not gonna read it, but I think you've got a training session coming with the MSB on the thirtieth. And I don't know, I have not talked with them, but I would assume that this is gonna be probably what they're going to
I think it's on the
It's the twenty ninth.
I know.
Twenty ninth. Thirtieth is in in Hector, right?
Yeah. Twenty ninth.
Happens, you know?
I got a couple of meetings are back.
Thanks for correcting that. So I think this is, it's an important policy as board members. And to build a relationship with each other of trust. And and I always look at the function of a school board relays out to the public, a successful system, if you can be a team working together. That's a good measure of a successful school, the school system. And so we need to think about that. And I think that's why, you know, I think the committee when this was brought out, they thought, wow, you know, we need to review this. This is training. Make you a better school board member. So so I want to share that with you. I told them I'd bring it out and and I think in the future it would be a good one to spend some time on that policy. And have a debate, talk about it. Because it is a policy, it's in place, it's it's in the books. So any questions?
Thank you. I will make the motion to approve this.
Second, Bulleen.
Motion's made by Hanson, seconded by Bulleen. Any discussion or questions? Hearing nothing, we will vote. We'll begin with Brian.
Hi.
Jamie?
Hi.
Sandy?
Hi.
Tracy?
Hi.
Melissa?
Hi.
And myself, I am an I. Motion carries. Number five, second, this is the second reading of policy four four, four fourteen mandated reporting of child neglect or physical or sexual abuse. It's enclosure number four. This is the second reading, just if there are any questions that anyone had. Now I'll do the time to to bring those up.
This is a mandatory policy. We need to have it. It needs to be reviewed annually. It's also needs to be in the student handbook. So just like you know that.
We will approve that next month. Uh number six, approve the state fire marshal fire inspection report from March fifth, twenty twenty-one. So will Benson. Motion's made by Benson.
Second, Segal.
Seconded by Segal. Any discussion or what do you want to do when you explain? Mr. Bransoy or?
There was an, there was an inspection, a fire marshal received a complaint from the resident of the district and it involved a couple uh stations where title teachers were working individually with students. And so that was a question mark. So he wanted to clarify that. And I give Denny a lot of respect in this area because he knows fire codes and he and he knows it well. And I think if you're on that tour, he could he recited lots of things there. And so so I I respect that and and I trust that that what he has got in place is correct. And the and the two areas, we had one area where it was a big exit entrance that basically it's in the old part of the building and nobody would use it. So that Mr. Benson decides to set up a title station there. And so we point the finger at him. No, but it's a quiet area. There's no traffic. And so we thought they thought that was a good spot. And and when title is working with students, they oftentimes pull them out in the hallway or wherever. And and so you walk down that elementary wing and during the day and there's lots of kids out in the hallway working with individual staff members and title. So that's they set up a little spot there and it was quiet and working well, but it is exit. And so it was about a four foot panel that they they used for divider. And and what they said was if that could be a two foot divider, then not a problem. So I think they're still using that. And then the other one was a an old restroom that is no longer being used and everything has been taken out of there. And there again is a one student that is in a parent situation. So so that was, that was okay. Found a couple of things that are stored in there that needed to remove, but other than that, it was was good. So but it's good to have them in the building and they read, they support what we're doing and so it's good. And and you can read his report and you can see that the two violas that were cited were repaired. So so we move on. So thanks.
All right, any other questions? Well, please, or discussion. Hearing nothing, we'll vote and we'll begin with Jamie.
Hi.
Sandy?
Hi.
Tracy?
Hi.
Melissa?
Hi.
Brian?
Hi.
And I myself, I am an I. Motion carries. Moving on to acknowledge and accept gifts, grants and requests. Member from Segal. Introduce the following resolution and move its adoption. Whereas Palchance Technology Light Beam Internet has generously donated two hundred and fifty dollars towards the Bold First Robotics Team. Whereas Polly Anderson, who's generously donated fifty dollars towards the Bold, toward the Bold Robotics Team. Whereas Beck Superior Hybrids Inc. has generously offered, has generously donated a hundred dollars towards the Bold First Robotics Team. Whereas Eric J. Shea State Farm Insurance has generously donated fifty dollars towards the Bold First Robotics Team. Whereas Rural Computer Consultants Inc. has generously donated twenty-five hundred dollars towards the Bold First Robotics Team. Whereas Hometown Bank has generously donated two hundred and fifty dollars towards the Bold First Robotics Team. Whereas Saunders Burton Schmitz P A has generously donated a hundred dollars towards the Bold First Robotics Team. Whereas Brownell Mines Club has generously donated five hundred dollars towards the Bold First Robotics Team. Therefore, be it resolved by the Bold School Board to gratefully accept these gifts. The motion of the adoption of the forward resolution was duly seconded by a member.
Bulleen. Go for it, Ben. Sandy.
Sam, Benson?
Sure.
All right, and um upon a vote being taken thereon, the following voted in favor thereof. Sandy?
Hi.
Tracy?
Hi.
Melissa?
Hi.
Brian?
Hi.
Jamie?
Hi.
And myself, I am an I. The full body resolution was approved this twenty-second day of March twenty twenty-one. Thank you all for the wonderful wonderful donations. All right, at this point, um we are on the motion to close for superintendent evaluation. So will Bookdo. But Bookdo's seconded by Benson and we will probably, after this, we'll probably take like a five minute break and and we can do what they need to do and then we will um resume back again. And uh we'll begin with Tracy.
Hi.
Melissa?
Hi.
Brian?
Hi.
Jamie?
Hi.
Sandy?
Hi.
And I myself, I am an I. And it is seven fifty-nine. Thank you all for coming and we'll see you at our next meeting.